Is that clock slow? Is that what you said, 5 minutes?
I've got 6:59.
Seven o'clock, we'll call Wisconsin meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible for the liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Rowley Johnson, Michelle Otto, Lloyd Henry, Mark Roger, Ben Cool, Tanya Minister, Barbara Swanson, Justin Candace, and Yvonne here.
Riley.
Riley stepping in for Mary, Sean Derrick, and Wendy Manson, our city crew. Now we need approval of agenda from move item D down to new business.
From the consent agenda.
Consent, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Otto, second by Johnson. Otto, do you vote? Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger? Motion five oh. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. We'll move item D down to new business. Now we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. We're moving item D to new business.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle Otto, second by Ben. Johnson, do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger?
Aye.
Michelle Otto?
Aye.
Motion carried by Otto. Okay, now we got a public hearing for relocation of additional use permit, 601 Nelson Boulevard, resolution number 2013 dash 12.
This is a housekeeping item. The conditional use permit was issued in January of 2003. Fight underground, yes, since relocated or left the city. I don't even know if they're still in business.
You're in.
And several of these items were never met. The permit is not valid, so motion to revoke is in order. The attached resolution would need to be approved by the city council.
I'll make a motion to revoke the additional use permit at 601 Nelson Boulevard, resolution 2013 dash 12.
I'll second that.
Motion by Henry, second by Johnson. Ben, do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger?
Aye.
Michelle Otto?
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carried by Otto. Then we move on to city council monthly meeting report for 2013, prepared by Barbara Swanson.
Before we do that, I have a question for you. I spoke to council member Otto about it, and I was wondering, I have this flat running on the menu. I was wondering how you feel about instead of the monthly report, if I replace that with a copy of your monthly time sheets that show your activity. If you'd rather I do the report, that's fine. The reason I bring it up is because there's some things that council members do and activities that aren't on that report. You know, for instance, council member Mayor Henry watered plants a lot, but that's not a meeting, so I don't put it on the report. There's some other activities that are, it's entirely up to you. I just thought I'd make the suggestion.
I will make a motion to approve to put in our actual sheet that we write up, so that when we look at the attendance that you do, so that the public can see that, see if I got mine for this one. I have the monthly basic meeting in there, but should get no charge, because that's all I, I don't charge for that, but it's not shown on here. So I will make a motion then to have our monthly time sheets that we do.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle Otto, second by Mark Roger, for a monthly meeting report in a county packet. Mark, do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Michelle Otto?
Hi.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by Otto.
I will update that report.
Did you want to move to monthly meeting reports for 2013?
That was it.
That was it?
Well, I mean, you can comment on any of your activity that you'd like to.
I attended Ray County Conference with different members from different counties. They wouldn't let Tom chip in all them around, and it was a nice meeting. I got to talk to county commissioner Charlie Perrell, and had a nice talk about different things, which I'm going to help you on a few different things. And media reading, that was good. Then we got the finance meeting, third quarter update, Wendy Hansen?
I just put it in your packets for tonight. We really touched on it at the budget meeting, so it's not any different than what we already did at the budget meeting at the end of October. But we put the third quarter report in here because we, I mean, we actually do it quarterly, so we include it in the packet for anybody that, any of the public that wanted to see it. But there's really nothing more to go over other than what we already did at the budget meeting.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to Park and Rec, Mr. Mayor, Michelle Otto.
Park and Rec just had their meeting last Tuesday, short and sweet. We made a motion to accept Jessie into Park and Rec, and a new prospective member, Sue. Okay.
White.
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 Other than that, it was a good meeting.
The council needs to act on Sue's, need a motion, the park recommended that they council appoint her.
So I would make a motion to appoint Sue to the Park and Rec meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle Otto, second by Ben to approve the new member of Park and Rec. Mark Roger, do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle Otto?
Aye.
Floyd Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, then we move into old business, regional parks. Justin Candace provide an update on regional park plan.
I move up here front there, later player doesn't play regional parks. All right, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, just providing you with the findings. Based on our last meeting, we have joint parks commission, city council. Based on that meeting, we had received input from parks commission and council on the concepts that we put together. And we revised those concepts down into one concept, so I'm going to present that to you this evening as well as a cost estimate for the overall park. Just real briefly for kind of the public, I guess, more so, the process that we followed to date for developing a park concept plan is we did a community-wide survey. We mailed out to all the residents of Montrose to gather input on what residents would like to see within this new park, as well as some other general input on miscellaneous park items. We compiled the results of those survey, of that survey, and we reviewed those results, ranked the top ones in order of kind of the top amenities that were wanted in a, in a park or that were missing in the city. We reviewed those results at a joint parks commission and city council workshop, first meeting that we had. And we kind of discussed what those top items were and which ones the parks commission and council felt were important to incorporate into the parks and which ones should be maybe, would fit better elsewhere in the community. Based on that, then, we went back and developed three different concept plans, three different options per se for the park out there. We then had a second council and joint parks commission workshop to discuss those three options and kind of took the good, the bad for each option. In actuality, the option number three that we had was most closely of what everybody kind of liked. But there were a few things from other options that we incorporated into that. And so then we revised, revised that option, and that's where we're at this evening. So we've had a fair amount of discussion on it up to this point, and again, this is a, this is a very large, it's a 22-acre site. It's a very large park, it'll be the largest park that the city will have, so there's a lot of area, there's a lot of things that can go into that. This concept plan that we're developing, when you look at the costs, the costs are very high. But this is something that is important to develop from the start and take it piece by piece as the city can afford it and as they desire to develop it. Council and staff felt it was important to go through this process so that what we build out there isn't going to hinder, hinder us in the future, hinder the city in the future, and that there's a plan going forward. It's also important from a grant standpoint. Anytime there's a grant opportunities that come up, one of the biggest things with grants is they like to see that the process has been followed and there's community-wide support and it's been thought out and thoroughly planned for what, what the grant application was going after. Rather than somebody just seeing a grant application and then reacting to it and say, oh, there's money available, let's build a baseball field. So this, this scores a lot higher generally on that. That being said, I mean, grants are still pretty competitive these days, so there's no shoe-in for a grant, but it certainly, certainly helps out. So maybe if you go back to that first figure on this review, Wendy, where the park is at, or go ahead, sorry, go down to the overall. So the park site is shown in blue here. Currently, the city has, in the lower left-hand corner, this area right here is space that the city currently has right now. There's a small baseball field right here, there's a city lift station here, it's green grass, open area, and there's an existing street that's built off of Aspen Lane up to the north up to this point right here. So the city acquired through tax forfeiture, acquired the, this whole area right over here in blue, as well as this piece right here. And the city was able to acquire that through tax forfeiture for an honor, is that correct?
We paid the recording fee with the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
It was like $232.
Pretty good deal.
Pretty good deal for 22 acres.
Yes, exactly. Just in general, kind of what's wrong with the park? This is Rowley Meadows Development, currently developed, single-family residential. This area in yellow right here is what was preliminary planted, we call, with the Rowley Meadows Development. So when this development occurred, this whole area was owned by the same developer. It was all laid out for single-family and multifamily residential use. So actually, the roads and lots and stuff are all preliminary laid out in here, but they're not final planted per se. But there's a, there's a plan going forward that could happen, you know, as development occurs. Right now, this area is just being farmed, it's just a farm field. Then to the north, if you can go up to the north a little bit, there's, the school district has this piece of property right here, and that's been earmarked for a future school at some point in time. There's a piece of property in between, this L-shaped piece of property, the root property, and then there's a property right in the middle here that has an existing house on it in the middle of that 22 acres, right there. We did, threw some discussion about perhaps in the future, the city may want to look at opportunities to acquire a strip of land to connect these two, connect the park to the school district, should, should the roots decide that they want to sell in the future or something like that. So that, that's a connection that should be, should be thought through in the future. I think that's the, I guess the second thing is the same thing with the Herzog property here, the existing house right here. In the future, should that property ever go up for sale, that may be something the city may want to consider, being it is right, you know, basically in the middle of the park. If you want to go, Wendy, to the concept plan, maybe with alternate phases?
Alternate phases?
Yeah. So this is the concept plan that was, can you zoom out a little bit? Hold up, the, the top, over, over one more. Yeah, there you go. Try one more. There you go. So as I mentioned, this is the existing road that's built right here right now. This concept, zoom out one more, one or two more.
Smaller?
Yeah. There we go, that's good. So the concept plan would, would have a roadway connecting all the way through the park from north to south, connecting to the existing roadway right here going to the north, and then there'd be a connection to a future roadway, east-west roadway on the north side of the park right here. Two access points into the park from the north or from the south. Few, few things, there was some different options about how the roadway, you know, whether it just be dead-ended here and then a parking lot. Some of the pluses or positives about having a roadway through the park was that more area of the park would be directly accessible, via vehicle or, you know, whatever, whatever feature or use that the user intended to use, they could, could have more direct access to it. As well as for people, you know, with disabilities or elderly or that are able to walk long distances, you know, perhaps grandparents going to a kid's baseball game or something like that, they can drive up, park right beside there and be adjacent to the area. Also, we felt it was just easier to patrol the park, safer, things like that. So those were some of the positives about that. Just walking through real briefly about what the features are of the park that were implemented or that were included. Maybe nice to zoom in a little bit, and we'll start in the south, Wendy, let's start south. This corner right here is laid out for a future multi-use civic center. That building could perhaps house any number of sorts of different things. Things that were discussed were like a senior center, youth center for, for kids. Other things that were discussed possibly would be a small fire station for a second, second fire station for storing a fire truck or two up there on the north side of the tracks. City offices in the future could be up there. So those were some of the, some of the potential uses. Other things, that basically it would be this dark gray area right here, this area here were parking lots for the civic center and just for the park. A couple of rain gardens in there, mixing in rain gardens for stormwater treatment use. On the west side of the roadway here, we have laid off soccer fields. It's really difficult to see that. Yeah, this left, there's a set of four, four soccer fields, basically four small soccer fields that can be also used as one large soccer field. And then here, again, two smaller soccer fields, and then the lighter shading that you have right there is a, is a possible outdoor hockey rink. So that could be overlaid over the top of two of those inside soccer fields. So we tried to incorporate as many multi-use things in there as possible. This right here is a fenced-in dog park. Dog park feature for fencing in and have dogs being able to run around there and exercise and such. It's another small parking lot right here. There's also right here a very small restroom, would just be, would just be a simple restroom, men, women, toilet, that's about it. Then up here to the north, the blue area, that's three tennis courts side by side, and that's a basketball court right there. Have a shelter, small, like a tech type shelter, covered shelter right here with a smaller playground area here. There's two playgrounds that we incorporated, one was a smaller one, just more localized, right here, and then there's this bigger regional one up here, I'll touch on. That's a future stormwater pond. We, according to our permit requirements, would be increasing the area by more than 4 acres of previous. So MPCA does require that we would have to put a treatment pond in, and also I have scattered throughout several what we call rain gardens. There's new permit requirements that have just come out that require us to actually reduce the volume of the runoff now too, so rain garden may be one item to do that. What rain gardens are is they're more of a kind of a natural feature. They have, oftentimes they contain native plants, and so they have a deep root system. They promote, promote infiltration of the, of the stormwater into the ground and uptake the fluids out of the stormwater through the root system as well. So they have several, plus they, plus they have a kind of natural look to them, they look nice, good park management. Over here, we have a regional playground then, that would be quite a very large playground, kind of a future playground, you know, a real big attraction, bigger than anything the city currently has, something that everybody in the city would want to go to, wouldn't even drive from, from outside the city, cities nearby. I think the Delano one was mentioned before, some people like, there's a pretty large one in Delano. Couple of baseball fields, this would be like a softball-type field or like a junior, like little league field is what that's sized at. Then this would be actually a high school baseball field is the sizing of it, so for like tournaments or amateurs or anything like that. That would be, that would be the size of baseball field there. Three parking lots, individual parking lots right through the side of the roadway, off the roadway. And then you can see in the lighter shading right here, this shade right here, that is, there was some request to look at what a size of a golf driving range would be as a possible interim use. So you know, that, that's a good idea, and this basically would be a tee-off area here, and this would be your, you know, drive, you'd be driving to the north here. So that's a potential interim use that could be, could be made if the baseball fields weren't being constructed at that time. Think that gets the, oh, and then just as far as filling in trails, that was a kind of a big feature that, you know, was hit on in the survey. So there's a trail that runs all the way along the side of the roadway here, trails that run along the parking lots, between the baseball fields. And then there's a creek that runs along the west side of the park all the way through here. And that creek extends south all the way through that development to the south, and that's kind of a natural area. The city's kind of looked at preserving that area as a corridor, nature corridor, and keeping a buffer area along there, the trail that runs all the way along there. So we kind of continued that theme, there'd be some native plantings along here, and just the idea, that's why the storm pond was put in here. Sort of the area on the west side of the trail up and down here would be more kind of a native area, you know, walk, walk the trail along there, things like that. Then if you want to go to the phase in plan, we did incorporate a potential phase one or of the, of the project, or what would, what would maybe be earmarked to start on for the project. There was quite a bit of discussion about that as well as, you know, what would be a good thing to start on, and I think the general consensus was that to build a roadway actually in the park would be a really good starting point for a few reasons. You know, the downside is it's a roadway, it's not something that park users can use, but on the other hand, what it does is it provides a backbone to start developing the park. All of a sudden, we go and we start plopping its features here and there and in the park, and then try to match everything, and at the end, that just, you know, just isn't a good way of building things. The other thing is, city crews, public work staff, roadway is not something that they have equipment or manpower to build. However, to go out and do grading for a dog park or grade on a basketball court and, you know, putting on some gravel and get some prep work done for another contractor to come in and pave it, those are all things that they've done in the past for other parks, and it's something that they could certainly do as resources and time allows. So if we can get the roadway in, then, then the backbone is there, that it's a place to set grades off of, access is provided into the park, and as funding becomes available and resources become available, you can bite off little bits and pieces here and there. The other thing that was included in phase one was part of the civic center, multi-use civic center. There was discussion about that as well, and, you know, what, what would be good use of, of the money? And the civic center, you know, some of the pros of providing a civic center is that it be able to be used year-round, 365 days a year versus, well, maybe not 365, but the majority of the year versus a baseball field or something like that that can only be used part of the year. So, so what's included in phase one here is the, the actual civic center portion of the building. Again, like I mentioned before, there was a, there was a lot of discussion about the civic center, but there's really probably no exact consensus on exactly what would be programmed into that building. So we kind of sized the building just in general, some other similar sized communities or facilities, what they may have, but really that could vary a lot depending on what you really want to have in it. And so, you know, if that's something that the, that's proceeded with down the road, really what, what should happen is a, is a study be done on that particular building itself and determine exactly what program elements, you know, get into the more detailed analysis of that center and laying out architecturally for what it might have, and figure out how you would lay out the building. These are just general blocks. Guess with that, I'll provide opportunity for any questions on, on that. Guess with that, I'll provide opportunity for any questions on that itself, otherwise I'll pull it up. One thing I did want to note too, on the, our last meeting, there was, there was a lot of discussion throughout both meetings and on the survey, there was a, one of the higher rate items was a pool. You can see in here that we did not have a pool included in the concept plan. There was a lot of discussion about the pool, it wasn't, it wasn't ignored by any, any stretch of the imagination. Some of the, some of the things that were talked about with the pool were its limited use, especially an outdoor pool, limited use as far as length of time, and the cost of operation. A, the cost of building a pool up front is expensive, then, but not only that, the cost of operating every year is expensive. There was also, you know, some discussion that maybe an indoor pool would be, would be a better use. That's something that could be looked at potentially in with, with the building or, you know, if you were to do a facility plan, something you can look at further. Just a few notes that I put in actually your last park meeting minutes. It wasn't talked about, I had to develop it after the meeting, I got some further data on the pool, that I wanted to highlight it here. I talked to US Aquatics in Delano, and also talked with another community that we've been working with, a pool rehab on, a little bit smaller than Montrose. And I would expect just for a simple outdoor pool, you know, with a couple of play structures, maybe a, maybe a water slide and a bathhouse, you could expect somewhere around two and a half million for, for general, you know. That's normal. Some of the, some of the estimates that we had been quoting earlier were a lot higher than that, but that was more of a kind of a grandiose, you know, that a lake and river running through it, and that nature. This is just a fairly simple pool with a couple of little features on it. But, but it would be nice if I said that water slide would still be a very nice attraction for residents to use. A financial study can be done by US Aquatics to further analyze the area, they actually come in with the demographics of the area and analyze what, what we could expect for operating costs in a year. But just looking in general, based on the area and other areas like this, this looks like you probably look at around $50,000 a year just for the net operating loss, net operating loss for the pool. So it is a fairly significant cost, but it's something that is certainly considered, one of the highlights of the items. Then going into the cost estimate, you can see there, we tried to break down as much as possible, so it's beneficial and useful as we use it down the road. We have a phase one cost estimate there, and itemized out into, into every item, kind of the storm sewer for the road extension, the, oh, I should mention one other thing on the road extension, we did actually show that we not going all the way to the north and any partway up, and just put a temporary call aside in there, thinking that you're really, you're really looking to build it all the way to the north and connect it to 112, and then for that phase one. So that's what this is based on. Roadway lighting, water, getting a sewer, little water, sewer, the trail is in there as a separate item, and then the multi-use civic center is in there based at 180 bucks a square foot, which is kind of standard rates for buildings of that type right now. That, the building, the civic center alone is 2.16 million, and then the total for phase one with all costs included are looking at maybe around 3.9 million. So that, while it's a large number, but you know, I tried to break it out in there and we can look at, yeah, doing part of that roadway, you know, develop, develop the civic center if that's what council decides to proceed with in the future. And then below that is additional components, kind of itemized out by use, what the expected cost of certain things are, basketball courts, tennis courts, further additions onto the civic center, grading of the site, baseball fields, softball fields, et cetera, restaurants, for that nature. At the second page, that's labeled future phases on top, that's basically what that is, is that's, most, most costs are detailing out of the baseball field and soccer fields and softball field. That's, that's included in the other page, but this is more of a detailed breakout of what, what specific, how that's broken out into costs. Again, even like a baseball field could be phased, we talked about that before, it would have to all be done up front, so it gives a general idea of what, what's some of the, how that, how that's broken out into cost. And I guess as far as, you know, what you guys would want to consider tonight, or what I recommend you to think about is, if you're comfortable in general with the plan and the layout to move forward and actually approve the concept plan, for the standpoint of it, it looks good for grants, if you have an approved concept plan, it wouldn't necessarily be blocking you into anything, you know, you wouldn't be proceeding forward with any costs or curating any costs at this time or constructing any portion of it, but it's just an approval of, yeah, we'd agree with, with this concept plan and he has a body, concur, and it looks good for, for grant applications.
Well, what I'd like to do, Justin, is have a town hall meeting and get other people's input. Cause council ain't being blamed for some of the throwing everybody into and trying to tax for this and tax for that. I'd be over here for that idea, that's why I'd like to have a town hall meeting where people can express your opinion.
Well, this, this plan is a consensus of Park and Rec and Council and everybody's input. Now we need to, we need to get the whole town involved as far as, and that's always been the plan all along, to have a town hall style meeting to see how much those folks will proceed with this. And at that, I mean, is that the consensus of the council?
That's my opinion.
So town hall stuff, state meeting, three hour, Christmas is coming.
As we join something else here for about three weeks, the people would know that they can come to this and be prepared or whatever they want to talk about.
The holidays come, it's gonna be a time people are not gonna make appointments.
Right.
Why not go right after the first day of the year then? That's what I thought.
What you're looking at right now, Justin, is just to start with the roadway process, right?
Really, I'm looking at also that, I mean, if that's what you want to do is go for a town hall style meeting, that's certainly fine, I think that's a, that's a fine idea. But yeah, I think.
The roadway would have to be put in first before they could design anything or see where anything wants to go, to see where we're headed.
Yeah, I think we'd be looking to put the roadway in before we did any of the other things, yeah. You know? I think that was the consensus.
What was the cost of the roadway?
Well, really grading, the roadway, the grading would sort of need to be included, so item number three there, about 50,000. Storm sewer for the extension is about 60,000, so that's about a little under 10,000. The extension of the roadway just itself is 140,000. Roadway lighting, 75,000, water, sewer, trail. It's pretty much everything except for the civic center. Yeah, so you could be looking at for your own seven, I don't know, 700,000, 7,800,000. You know, maybe we wouldn't even lay it right away if it's the second phase. We could look at options like that.
So it's not forgotten?
Yeah.
Do you have an hour to talk about?
Now is there grants out there for this kind of work yet or not?
You know, for the roadway itself, I think that probably, I haven't seen a lot for the roadway itself, though roadway grants are pretty tough to come by. There may be like baseball field, there's grants, trails, there's grants for park amenities. We just keep our eyes open in here, open, now we have a plan, have a specific, no one. Get our extra grants available.
We were figuring out having a trail alongside that, not anything.
Yeah, the trail in phase one there that's shown is, is, that's pretty much what it is, is the trail.
Are there any, any scheduled uses of the center here, the first week of January that you know of?
Off the top of my head, the Lions is at the first and the third Mondays. Third department uses it some Tuesdays.
Where your department might be here on the second.
I'm working back on the first Tuesday.
Park and Rec?
Park and Rec.
That's a, yeah, we have that, it's a problem, could, rather than doing that, we could...
Were, were we, were we considering, yeah, Michelle, were we considering going down to one, not council meeting, along with that next year? Why not just use, was that?
I think January.
So let's, let's use the, what would be the second council meeting of January, let's use that, because that's kind of already set aside as we would meet anyways.
So the 27th, January?
Yeah. Does anyone have any conflicts there?
The, I have gone that week. I'm thoroughly hammered out, but I already have my plan for this one, so.
You want someone warm?
Maybe. I'm not wanting a place cold.
Our, our, does that, that's us off if we hold our regular scheduled council meeting on the 27th?
Well, it does mess us up from like general business items, you know, paying the bills on time, that kind of thing.
Well, that's what Justin's gonna want anyway.
The 14th?
The 27th.
The 27th, that's not, that would be the second conference.
Was she referring to the 14th? Like, do I miss something, is she?
No, I, the 13th would be our, our first.
That's my math, the Monday. You were thinking of flip-flopping.
I was thinking of flip-flopping, so that we could come in, because he's gonna need me there.
Well, like Wendy said, we could look at doing it with the Park and Rec on the 7th, like we did before, with the storm, that's your primary. Is that why Park and Rec?
That'd be the first Tuesday, or the third.
And everybody else in the census.
If we talked to him now, we probably would.
There's a few options. That'd be the 7th of January.
That would be the meeting.
You say the 7th?
Yeah.
We have three, we have three Park and Rec.
Oh, Lily, how does that work for the fire department? Oh, that's, that's a fire department.
The Tuesday?
Yeah, that, Tuesday and the 7th.
The first Tuesday, you guys meet the first Tuesday?
The first three Tuesdays of the month, it's either meeting or trainings.
And we couldn't go earlier than that meeting because they're doing truck maintenance and stuff, so that's not gonna work for those cases.
What time is Park and Rec, 7?
Willie, do you guys do truck maintenance before your meeting or after?
Before.
You know, before the meeting?
Before.
Thursday, the night.
The Thursday?
That'd be the second Thursday.
That's your, your work.
How about you two, Park and Rec?
Send an email to Jason.
I think we could reschedule our meeting for that, for that day.
Well, that's, we won't meet again before then, Park and Rec doesn't meet before then, should we, right?
Correct.
So.
We can still press search. Just reschedule for that.
All right, January 9th. We're all good? 7.
I think it's very much earlier, so we have, here, I mean, a lot of people don't do those families, have dinner or something like that, so.
So you want to have like your regional park open as well?
Yeah. On site?
Yeah. Oh, no. No.
We want everybody here.
Not freezing.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion for January 9th at 7 o'clock to have a town hall meeting tomorrow at 7 o'clock.
I will make the motion to have a meeting January 9th to continue with the park development, original park development, at 7 o'clock. Community center.
I'll second, show up, hold a discussion.
No, go ahead. Just thinking about that, when, do you know when our newsletter would come out, the previous one?
Well, we said went out in January, but it's usually later in the month.
So there's not going to be any newsletters between, no?
Not unless we do a special one.
I'm thinking that we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do some kind of...
I'm just posting on something like that, 400 folks.
No. Well, usually runs just under 300.
So are we gonna need, we're gonna need a motion for the expenditure for the, the post, postcard?
No, we don't want to do a postcard, because if you do a postcard for a survey, you don't have that much time.
Yeah, you gotta have something, but God, I think flyers.
Okay. I, I just gotta go around a bus and bring people here by yourself, or?
No, but, no, but it's just the idea that, a postcard to go, just get thrown away if you see a problem, it's covered this way. We went through this with the city hall, they were there a few years ago.
Okay, that's why we're having discussions, what, what are your suggestions then, how do we get people's attention on this? Because this is a big deal.
Well, we got a bunch of flyers made up, I'll walk Besen Hills, I'll walk two other parks, I don't bother being the least.
I wonder if we need to, because it is such a big project, so we need to put together some information we can work with old to make, put together.
Can we add it to the water belt? Put it out on the water belt? I don't have my water belt, except for the toll.
I don't like the doors.
I mean, it's a good idea, but.
Because this is a big deal, I notice.
Well, we got a bunch of flyers made up, I'll walk Besen Hills, and I'll walk two other parks, I don't bother being the least.
I wonder if we need to, um, because it is such a big project, so we need to put together some information, we can work with Bolton, maybe put together...
Can we add it to the wire belt? Put it down on the wire belt? I don't have a real wire belt, except for the tall.
I don't like the doors.
I mean, it's a good idea, but it's flyer.
I don't know, it's expensive to do it.
How much would it be for us to put a flyer type deal into the drawing?
I, I don't get the grammar.
Everybody should give, everybody should give the grammar.
A lot of nobody can read it, people throw it to the side, that's it. Like, what about the driveway, what about the driver?
What about the advertising that you do for like the pancake breakfasts and stuff that are on the corner out here on twelve and, and twelve?
What are we talking? Yeah, but maybe we can get an engine in the neighbors, both our, like, uh, they don't charge for that, I don't think.
And it'd be about three hundred dollars into a special one, is that it?
To do a mailing, it's right around three hundred.
Well, if we open this factory, we're gonna cover three forty-nine million. Right.
To do that, uh, will, will you talk to the Lions, and see if they can use their site?
Yeah, yes, we'd be interested.
Last Monday? Yeah.
So we're free? Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Should we try to begin a draft of that, to the next council meeting?
Of, uh, newsletter?
Flyer?
Yes.
It'd be more of a newsletter, I think, just, uh, kind of information, all depending on the, maybe Justin's information here, and the that, when you have that drawing.
Or you, uh, yeah. One or the other.
Yeah. You have whichever one you prefer.
We have a really good graphics design artist do, um, I could get an estimate from him on what, uh, what, what it cost for him to put together a, kind of a eye-catching brochure. It's really nice stuff.
Could you let us know about the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Are we meeting again this month, please? Uh... So you could get us a flyer type deal by the way, Justin?
Yeah, you, you would, you would wanna a cost estimate of what the cost is there, right, or?
Just send out a flyer?
No, do you want us to go ahead and, and do a flyer?
Could, could you do a flyer without too much, probably?
Yeah, I don't think it would be too much. If it, if it's any significant, I'll, I'll discuss it with, with the owner, but, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you should do that.
Yeah, we could, you know, incorporate some cost stuff, and multiple things together in one thing, that just kind of pops up.
Thank you.
That's, was that, sorry, I wasn't listening.
The twenty, Monday or the twenty-fifth?
Okay.
So, any other questions?
Uh, Justin, I kinda wanna have input on that, too, to make sure that we get the, uh, the public's attention.
Uh-huh.
As far as the wording of the flyer goes, and...
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just shoot it to all council?
Yeah, when we get a draft done, we could, I could email the board, she can shoot it out. Yeah. And then, uh, you know, I just think back at our Hininge retreat that we had a few months ago, and I think, uh, kinda rings a bell that actually, I can't remember if it was for this item, or what, it was for, either he was, it might have been for this, to try and get people here for helping us, or for this. Is to offer, you know, it sounds silly, but offer free ice cream, or, I don't, I don't know if that helps or not, but...
Hot chocolate.
Hot chocolate, yeah. Ice cream, I'd agree, I'd agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Hot chocolate, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking dogs or something?
Yeah.
Especially in January, if they need some talking to them on.
So we'll put down the eleven twenty-five agenda?
Yeah.
I think it's important that we actually do that to Osprey, I was going to control that too, but, not a part of anything to get people here. Hopefully, hopefully gets both the, you know, both people that, that are for the park, and people that have other ideas as well. I think that's the challenge, is to get, get a good mix of people, and a good mix of people as well.
The only reason I've requested this, Justin, is to get the town hall people to come and see what's going on, because I've been hearing some rumors that the council's gonna do this, and the town got a mail-in call.
Yeah. I certainly agree, I think it's important for all, for all residents, and if you have a meeting, all you can do is have a meeting and try and do it all at once. Yeah.
So, hold on, we've got the motion made, and Justin's gonna take care of the flyers and stuff that we bring up at the council meeting on the twenty-fifth of November. Would you allow a voting vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I over, aye. Mark Rocker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
I over.
Okay, request for council action, John C. Stigler, three ten, we need late permission for third dog action, need a motion to approve or deny the question.
I just wanted to make one note, I kinda wrote that in her opinion, didn't say that she obtained the third dog, she's gonna say that with her dog, means a total of three. And I wasn't, I did not know that she had to get a special permission, so when I talked to the landlord, she, and until I talked to her, she wasn't aware of it either. But it's kind of like a double renting situation, Melissa's renting the upstairs, and Melissa's the bottom stairs. It's a fenced yard, uh, like, two dogs downstairs, her dog is upstairs. And until I received the newsletter, I wasn't aware that I had to get permission for this. But I do have documents showing that all dogs are, uh, fixed, have all their shots, and also, just to kinda show you what, what dog I have, and just two small dogs. I took a picture of each one I have together, one's fourteen, one's twelve pounds, a three-year-old and a year and a half. Some of your consideration.
Do you have two dogs?
Yeah.
What is her dog?
I believe it is a beagle.
It's a beagle.
So you have an upper and lower shared house?
Yes.
Who units or whatever?
That is correct. And at times of terror, and probably she's the landlord, she said if she needs, if you guys need her, call, it's confirmed that it's a double renter, she has an upstairs downstairs rental, she can do that for you guys.
How long do you have these dogs?
Little have had since birth, Dexter, I've had an Oliver, going on two months. It was kind of a miscommunication, I wasn't, she said she was getting, uh, roommate Melissa said she was getting a dog at the time that I went to the rescue and actually got him, she had not obtained the dog, so it was happening at the same time. Uh, both dogs happened to come into each other, so, situation at the same time. So, just, I know there's other neighbors in the yard, but, for example, the neighbor directly behind me, he has more different dogs. So, like I said, I would run into the council before I obtained the dog, but I was unaware that it's a little bit of special permission, I have more than two, was something that was new to me, uh, until I received the newsletter. And as I mentioned, you can eat vaccination records or anything that I have in here as well.
And you're, it's, I could pretty much have it on the backyard, then ask whether...
Yeah, it is, it's, that's, that's a really close backyard, yeah.
Did you, uh, any concerns or any, was it all clear now?
I haven't heard any from any of the neighbors concerning anything. Uh, as I mentioned, the guy here, Hininge, Rayden, he has four, four dogs that are rescues that are in his backyard. Um, pretty much everyone around the neighborhood has at least two dogs. So I don't think there's a concern with any of the neighbors having multiple dogs. Landlord has no problem with, with it, she, uh, she's more than happy to accommodate us with that.
How does the ordinance, uh, reach her?
Two dogs. Two dogs. Two dogs is permitted.
Her house, or?
Her home.
Her home.
So I don't know, you know, in a case like this, when there's really two units in a, in a, I don't know, it's...
It's still, it's still a separate law.
Right.
Yeah, I think, uh, from what the newsletter said, it's, it gets said from her, well, I think is how it is, really.
Because then, then that would technically have to be, so it is, uh, multiple family rolling, wouldn't it, if, if ordered?
Well, we have a couple situations that, where there's a upstairs home on the first floor, was a lower level apartment.
Okay.
But in that, in that case, I think, you know, there are two different handles, so, for each.
Is this something?
Separate access, or, and, and trans, I don't know if you have separate?
Well, I mean, there's, there's a downstairs, like, patio door, upstairs, you know, regular door, uh, I may use the access downstairs, I mean, it's a shared garage, if you like, or like that, but, yeah, I mean, there's a main, it's just a regular, simple, uh, hall. I mean, it is, there's three bedrooms in the house, so, two baths upstairs.
So it's not like two, you have a shared kitchen and stuff?
Yeah, there's a shared kitchen upstairs, yes.
So, yeah, that would be a single.
Right.
It's the same situation as the, the neighbor we talked to, I've heard that, does, is there a special situation there, four dogs, as far as?
I, I didn't know how to break down.
Permission with the council, or do you think that?
I have no idea, I would have to go look at that, I don't, I, I don't know.
Is this, is this something, you should, you never get a marriage, or something like that?
Right, that's true. Very true.
Has the council made exceptions like this before, or?
Yes, they have. Well, Councilmember Johnson's right, you know, unless somebody calls it to my intention, or someone's intention at City Hall, and usually it would be a complaint, evolved, don't really know who has, how many dogs, who they have, if they have a dog, how it's...
Or are there all licenses?
I have no idea, I don't know who he's talking about.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, that, you know, I don't mind the three dogs in the home. Um, uh, my dog is ten years old, it was my ex's dog who he's had since he was six weeks old, so it has been in my son's life since he was born. Um, he gave us the dog because he had to move and was not able to be with him permanently. The dog is able to go with Ben to his dad's house every other weekend, his apartment complex did approve that, but not permanently. Um, I did research before I got the dog, anything I would need to do with the city, so I did obtain the license prior to the dog being in the home. Um, so I just wanted to state that, and I did speak with the landlord and paid a vet deposit as well.
So you've had the dog for a while, you didn't just obtain the dog?
Um, we got the dog, I believe, I got my license on the twelfth, we brought him home on the fourteenth.
Nineteenth, or something.
Okay, so we, um, that was the Friday, we brought him home this Sunday after I got the license. Um, but, prior to that, yes, the dog had been, excuse me, um, before I moved to Montrose, had been living with, with me and my son, and, well, my, now ex. So, the only other option besides giving the dog to my son and me was to give it away to someone else. So we were trying to avoid that.
Right, okay.
And I do have proof of the license and the date, I have the receipts, plus his current updated shot, he has been fixed a few years ago, um, and I can obtain that as well if I need to.
I, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't received any complaints from anybody about, uh, animals having that, or something.
That's the only thing, it gives me any cause at all, if, if we could grant this, and there would be a complaint, like, the dogs are barely immune to each other, so, they didn't get along, or there was barking, or digging, or something like that, and the neighbors did complain?
I mean, that was one of the concerns when I had, um, taken a look at Dexter as being a foster.
Yeah.
Um, is, they gave me a week's time to see if it would be a fit, and then another additional two weeks while I paid for it, because we emailed me. During that first two weeks, if there was any problems or anything like that, definitely can, you know, return it, I mean, that lost for me, I mean, they replaced, I paid three hundred dollars for the dog, up to, I think it was like two hundred dollars, they reimbursed me. Uh, the dogs have gotten along fine, there's been no issues with that. Um, and, uh, I pretty much stay outside with them, so if there is now any barking or anything like that, I do try to stop them immediately. I don't say, you know, like, a hundred percent of the time I'm standing out, because I am a smoker, I don't smoke in the house. So, most of the time, all the dogs are out, you know, minus, you know, like, a few times, I'll just let them outside, and I'm doing things in the house, but, for the majority, I'm outside with them.
And you even there, like that?
Yes. I just went through, stayed freezing, and picked up, you know, all the dog stuff.
Okay. It's better than this process.
Well, yeah, exactly, it's a lot easier to pick up, and, you know, plus, up top, they, you know, I mean, if a son ever comes downstairs or anything like that, and, you know, you can yell at him, because son stepped in poo, and I don't like, you know, stepping in it or anything like that. I mean, I don't do it as, immediately, as soon as they're done doing their business, but I will do it once a week, or so, you know, through, I'll pick it up through the yard. Which is kinda unique, because it's lovely, each, each one has their own spot, so I'm not having to, like, spot check the whole yard.
But the, the three dogs get along, I mean?
Um, well, she has a lead, a leash upstairs, uh, that she keeps her dog on, and I have the two that are right downstairs.
Awesome.
I even, I mean, I've, when I've come from a walk, and her dog's been outside and stuff like that, they've, you know, slept each other, whatever, there's been no issues with that. Um, so as far as I know, they, you know, there wouldn't, wouldn't be any problems, like, you know, if she let, if, like, the basement door was left open, or the dogs came downstairs or anything like that. Um, she also has a cat, cats came downstairs before, never been an issue with either one of the dogs. Um, you know, might be a little raw, you know, but that's about it. Uh, both of them are, are trained to, like, you know, come to me, you know, so, like, uh, unless they're being stubborn one day, but, most of the time, like, if they're, like, barking, or anything, I'm always, I'm, I'm, I mean, eleven, so, for that. My main concern is, you know, there's a couple of other neighbors that have barking dogs, I understand that situation, but I try to minimize that as much as possible, slightly. I am not obtaining a complaint, you know?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, there's a eleven neighbor dog that's, uh, same, similar, similar dog, it's a pound dog, and, and, you know, you can hear it at five o'clock in the morning, when I'm getting up ready, you know, outside with my smoke, and you can hear that dog calling, so, I don't wanna be known as that guy. Yeah. You know, and I've talked, I mean, there's Mark on the, Mark on the right of me, there's, uh, Brian on the left of me, I've also told them if there's any issues, please, you know, you know, so that these issues can be addressed.
From the interim, you seem like responsible, I, I appreciate that, and, so, as far as, I have any input here, I... Yes, the council's gonna approve this.
Are we opening ourselves up for letting water in?
Just give my opinion.
Oh, you're, you know, she had, uh, her water's off, and it's supposed to be a malfunction.
That's February.
It's February?
I got a problem with that.
Yeah, yeah, and that, you know, I, I think, you know, if you start a precedence of some of this, you're gonna start opening yourselves up, and you're on rules and stuff like this, for a reason.
That's why, that's why we have John here, and that's why we're asking questions, I would like to, to answer my questions, to, to...
But you have a family owner, two or three, or four, around here, since I've been on the council, I've asked me four, uh, yeah, council.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm, I'm an animal lover, but I don't, I don't deal with animals in the house, they're outside.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
There, there, there's no way you're gonna talk me into having a dog or a cat in my house, goldfish baby, that's it. Goldfish baby, that's it.
Is that a motion?
I don't, we have to do a motion, council actually, will we?
Yes.
Yes.
We have, yes.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I'll make a motion that, that the council approve this request for the third dog, for John.
Hi, second half.
Motion by Mark, second time Michelle, Johnson, you vote.
Aye.
Ben? Aye. Aye, or aye, Michelle?
Aye. Can I ask a question? So can the motion be something like to approve a third dog for that residence and those two people? So in the future, if that, as people change, so it's not permanent for that forever?
Aye. Okay, so should we word it for both? It's Melissa and John, and it's, and right now it's, it's a, it's a dual rentable situation.
Yeah.
So I would like to end that my motion to go for a dual occupancy rentable for, for two people and total of three dogs. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Do we, should we state the property?
Three, ten, Midy Lane.
Three.
Yeah, and the owner's name, so they...
Yeah, the owners of the property are...
I think if you do the dog owner's...
Oh, I'm sorry. And that's John Segler.
John Segler.
And...
Melissa, goodbye.
Does that work for you?
Okay, motion carried, five oh.
I guess so, yeah. Mark, not you.
Aye.
Just by you.
I appreciate you guys, I'm gonna...
Okay, see you soon. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to speed light on Midy Lane.
Um, this was actually me, I guess, so, uh, driving down Midy Lane. New Midy Lane is what I would think, but there's no street, there's no street light there. I don't know how they got this plugged or, you know, not on there from the beginning, but it's pretty dark and pretty freaky. All your bikes, for the treatment, whatever. So I was looking at it having a street light put in, but XL was looking to charge us ten thousand dollars for one light. So, um, it's a little spending.
Plus a two thousand dollar frost charge.
If we do it now, yeah, it should be like twelve thousand dollars, so...
Yeah, I know, they talked to the part, we think that, uh, on First Street, where they've got two of the same lights that are about a hundred feet apart, and there's well over a hundred yards between the two streetlights on Midy Lane. And it was a commission with your cell phone or some kind of a holdup. That's a lot of money.
Justin, do you have any idea what it'd take, how, if you could move a light from one street to another like that, it'd be very expensive to do that. On First Street North, there's several that are really close together, and then on Midy Lane, they're a long way apart.
They're all lights, all the lights though?
I think they're all owned by the city, the developer paid to, has paid for them and bought them and installed them. And then the city pays for however long.
Yeah, it depends on how the wire in this work is, isn't it? I mean, it's certainly cheaper than, I, we'd have to look and see how the agreement is, who, who exactly owns it. Yeah, certain, we own them, but it certainly be cheaper than putting people, like, still have, have some costs, the wire, moving, or...
There's a pedestal there, isn't there?
Yeah, so a board foundation, I mean, probably, just off the top of my head, I'm sure it's going to be at least fifty percent.
So do you think about my thousand dollars to do with them?
I, I have no idea, that's... I'd say it's going to be at least half of it.
They must have looked at that. I don't know, you guys live on Midy Lane?
Um, yes, I did take my son for a treat and, I mean, the street was crowded with kids and parents, so we were just walking down the street. But it was, it was dark, and, I mean, there are, um, most of the houses on the street are families with multiple children. I mean, I only have one, but I mean, we have four on one side, two on the other, we have seven, a couple houses down, another group of four, a few houses down. Um, and just playing, I mean, in the summer, they're all playing, even at night, it is, once it starts to get dark, there is a lot of kids, it is hard to see. And traffic does move much faster than people on the street.
Yeah, you are right in this spot where it's the darkest, yeah. So there, there have been concerns then, not so many complaints, but there are concerns.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, you have to be careful driving, but you also have to be careful, you know, I mean, going in and out of your driveway, because you can't, you know, there is a certain amount of blindness.
Yep.
Generally, driving a car, but at night, you know, it's even worse, I mean, if there's kids out playing on the sidewalk, you can't see them. Um, out in the street, there's kids right in the lightest.
Also right where our house is positioned, there's that little curve in the road as well, so you can't see that curve.
Right.
And if people had like a dark vehicle sitting on the side of the street, which there's a couple of them parked their truck on there.
Yep.
You know, my, my headlights aren't that bright, so I have to drive with, you know, the high beam on, just to make sure that I can see. But yeah, it's very hard to notice anything on that street. You know, especially, you know, for safety wise or anything like that.
Yeah, after council meeting one day, we went out, they're driving apart, and that is one of the darkest spots in the newer neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think there's only a total of three lamp, three lights, one at the stop sign, one at the other stop sign, and one between the curb and that other stop sign, and I think there's a total of three lamps on that whole street.
Yep, and from my house on Emerson to Mindy, there's thirteen.
It's well...
Okay, Justin, could you look into that, something?
Yeah, I'll work, I'll work with Sean on that, for sure, yep.
Maybe let us know that to find out if we can possibly...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just give me a better idea.
Awesome. I don't know if I can piggyback on that, but we did, we had talked about a light for the new park, and it doesn't help.
I did speak with the representative on XL, he's working up some numbers for me, and then it's going to be spent.
And there had, there was a request for it, there's a real dark spot going up there, then from intersection, all the way over the hill before you get to the next light. And, um, I've met people walking that have complained about that, that's a pretty intimidating spot there, too.
Uh, that line that runs down there is just not as easy as sticking lights on. That's all primary feed, so it's going to be stepped down to transformers to secondary. And when we looked at that, there's only one bowl that has a transformer right now, so if we look at, uh, adding lights there, it might condition the cost, too.
All right. Maybe it would be nice to at least get more park figures, so that I can retrieve that information.
Yep.
We need a motion on that, too, I heard. Can I have one, can I see?
What?
Just put it on the next to Jen.
Okay.
So those are two, I think.
So, no, we've been in new business. Okay, we moved item D down into new business. Authorization to close city offices and public works at twelve noon on Christmas Eve. Employees will be compensated by using comprehensive during time indication or deal.
Um, I ask for this to be moved due to the reason that Christmas Eve is...
Tuesday.
Oh, Wednesday?
Tuesday.
The twenty-fourth, so we would be closing at noon. The request is to close at noon on the twenty-fourth, close on the twenty-fifth. Open on the twenty-sixth, closed again after the twenty-seventh, because we're only open till eleven on Friday. So basically, two days of being open during that meeting. So it was my concern that that's really not, uh, convenient for the public. Only have only two days of the week that we're open. So that is why I ask for it to be moved for, for the discussion.
Can I, can I add something? In the past, um, when it's fallen, like when Christmas has fallen on Tuesday, we've been closed Monday and Tuesday. It's, if we get one person through the door on Christmas Eve, it'll be a miracle. It's, it is one of the deadest days around. It's kind of like the week of Fourth of July, if we get two people in the whole week. So that's why we asked if we could close at noon, because it is, it's dead, there's nobody around. And in the past, like I said, there's been times where we've actually even closed the whole entire day, or we've closed at noon in the past, too.
But then you'd take your vacation or PTO?
Yeah, we would just, we would be open the five hours, we'd be open from seven till twelve. And then the other four hours, we'd use either PTO or vacation or comp or something to cover it.
Sean, is this what you guys...
Customer, that's what we've done in the past several years, with the exception of, it's still long, if you had to, which we have done.
Yeah. And we would, when we had, now, the places that I've worked, maybe then you could see us too, manufacturing, it all depends on workload there, same. But when Christmas falls on Wednesday, uh, that would be the only day that we'd get off, but when it would fall on a Tuesday, a lot of times the boss would always give us money out.
Or it depends upon someone on the company, if they have floating holidays. Now, I know, like, for myself, I have that week off. And, you know, I know on my boss's calendar, there's, uh, there're people that are already penciled in for Tuesday off also, you know? Because if they're going out of town to, to go spend, spend part of Christmas with family, I mean, because I know I'm leaving at noon on that Tuesday, and I'm driving down to Albuquerque, New Mexico, straight through, so...
I know that, uh, Kevin County, uh, Christmas Eve, the county commissioners insist that it's open on Christmas Eve. It's a duty contract, just one day. It's for...
Personal policy, yeah, personal policy. Personal policy says Christmas Day. That's why we've always just brought it before the council to see if we can close our week on Christmas Eve. Like I said, we've done where it's been closed completely the whole day, I think we've done noon, the majority of the time we've closed at noon. Um, we might even close once at two, I can't remember. But I think the last number of years, we've closed like at noon. Or not worked at all, depending on where it felt.
I'm okay with it. Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the city office and public works to, uh, close on noon, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, which is a Tuesday, and then, uh, use, um, count time, vacation or PTO for the remainder of the day.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ben, second by Mark, to approve authorization to close city offices, public works at twelve noon on Christmas Eve. Employees will be compensated by using comprehensive time, vacation or PTO. Ben, I'll be moving.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Um, no.
Oy?
No.
And I'll vote, motion down three two. We've got miscellaneous open forum. I've got some acknowledgements here that I'd like to read. Dear Mr. Mayor, it is with sincere appreciation that this letter comes to you. This is in regard to dedication and professionalism that was shown by Sean Dury, Public Works Director and his crew of men. Recently, he addressed several issues regarding the storm water treatment pond. As our community of Rock Brook Estates during his mission to correct several issues regarding this pond, their commitment to the homeowners effective was done and complete, pride and professionalism. They kept us informed of their mission and even used suggestions of the homeowners in the course of the changes. This is seldom seen, as you may be well aware of the course of business these days. Please take a moment and congratulate these nine members of our city crew for a job well done. Sincerely, Patrick and Chief Pooh. And I have another one. Dear Mr. Dury, it is with great appreciation that we write this letter to you and your crew with regards to the storm water treatment pond within the community of Rock Brook Estates. For recent reworking of this pond, drainage system was performed by your crew with yourself and pride in the work you all did, and with complete professionalism during the course of all the work you and your team performed. It was very much appreciated to be informed and also allowed to make suggestions regarding the project. Your crew as yourself showed what professional public work employees we have working for us, homeowners in our city. Please give yourself and your crew of men a pat on the back for a job well done, much appreciated by us, the homeowners of all. Sincerely, Patrick and Chief Pooh. Then I have one for Mr. Quinn Johnson, Councilman. Dear Mr. Johnson, just wanted to take a moment to let you know that your dedication to the issue regarding the storm water treatment pond within the community of Rock Brook Estates has been truly appreciated. You have been a wonderful, appreciative person to help us with dealing with the issues arising from this hill plan development issue. You have kept us all well informed as you find regarding talks and issues which is deeply appreciated. Your dedication to serving us as a councilman and your ever flung, giving us private all of our councilmen. Its wish will need to be addressed as we get to Scottsburg, while we're working with you to find solutions needed to complete this mission. Once again, thank you for your concern and commitments regarding town, city and citizens with a job well done. Sincerely, Patrick and Chief Pooh. Thank you very much. Appreciate the letter, and your dolly, our people in Montrose.
Hundred dollar purchase of Montrose Lions for, um, purchasing anything out of the housing base at, on Sunday night.
I'd like to acknowledge the Montrose Lions, who let us use their sign for our Santa Claus on the twenty-third, remember? Coming up at ten o'clock at noon, taking pictures and stuff with Santa. Any other acknowledgements? Any other acknowledgements? What need to appear?
I don't think a motion for Sean.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Everybody in full? We need to call, thanks, everybody, for coming. Have a good day.